You are watching XS LaPorte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is the November sixth, twenty twenty four meeting of Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportecounty.org.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the November sixth, Michigan City City Council meeting to order. If you would please silence all electronic devices, stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, eternal, liberty, justice, and all.
Ms. Nyla, want a roll call, please?
Mr. Beatrice?
Present.
Mr. Coulter?
Present.
Mr. Dabney? Dr. Cora?
Present.
Ms. Lee?
Present.
Ms. Maldonar?
Present.
Mr. Nelson?
Present.
Mr. Preszbalinski?
Present.
And Ms. Chol.
Present.
We have eight present and one absent.
And I'm sure Mr. Dabney's on his way. Maybe he had to work a little late. I hadn't received a phone call. Pardon? Oh, okay. All right. Mr. Dabney will not be here and he has an excused absence. Approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting on October the fifteenth and from the special meeting on October the third. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Councilman Cora and seconded by Councilwoman Tracy Tillman. Ms. Nyla? Does everyone, uh, there was no corrections or anything like that? Uh, everyone vote by ayes if they approve?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
All right, minutes are approved. Reports of standing committees? Any reports of standing committees this evening? Okay. Claim stocking? Councilwoman Tillman?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Michigan City Finance Committee met on today, November sixth, twenty twenty four, at six oh eight PM. It wasn't informal. We did not have a quorum. It was just an informative. Starting off with the Michigan City Riverboat and Boyd Claim Stocking for November sixth, twenty twenty four. Riverboat Fund two, two, three, five, thirty seven thousand, seven hundred ninety nine dollars, eighty six cents. Riverboat EFT Fund, two, two, three, five, one hundred seventy three thousand, eight hundred seventy seven dollars. Boyd Development Fund, two, five, zero, four, zero dollars. Total claims, two hundred eleven thousand, six hundred seventy six dollars, eighty six cents. The one hundred seventy three dollars, thousand, eight hundred seventy seven dollars is for, um, the city of Michigan City for the sinking sands. And the thirty seven thousand, seven hundred ninety nine dollars, eighty six cents is for Laporte Chrysler Inc. The City of Michigan City twenty twenty four Riverboat Fund Statement of Cash Position Fiscal Year to Date, November thirtieth, twenty twenty four, ending balance is three million, five hundred seventeen thousand, four hundred three dollars and seventeen cents. I would also just like to, um, thank the City of Michigan City Department Heads and the Controller's Office and the Mayor and her administration that the council and the city finance did complete and submit, um, our budget for the twenty, for the budget for twenty twenty five. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Tillman. Is there a motion to accept the, uh, claims as presented?
So. Set.
Motion by Dr. Cora and seconded by Councilman Coulter. Everyone in approval, seconded by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any names?
Mr. President.
Pardon?
It was, uh, Councilman Nelson that seconded it.
It was Councilman Nelson that seconded it.
He, he, he said it.
Oh, okay. Okay. Councilman, Councilman Joseph Nelson seconded the motion. Ms. Nyla?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, reports from boards and commissions? Yes, Councilwoman Mullenhour?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, wanted to give an, a report on the Michigan City Sustainability Commission's first annual EV ride and drive event. Um, it was extremely successful. We had one hundred attendees and we ended up having ten electric vehicles there, um, for display for people to see. Um, the ribbon cutting went off without incident. The, um, Chamber of Commerce brought over their big scissors and Tristan Bogart, who started out with us as a high school commissioner and now is a regular commissioner, we gave him the honor of cutting the ribbon since this has been his dream for a very long time. And then, um, I want to recognize our partners who made this possible. Drive Clean Indiana, um, was the coordinator for the event. Um, the Indiana Volkswagen Mitigation Trust Fund is the, um, money that actually made it possible for us to get these EV chargers without, without cost. Um, we have two of them with four plugs and I see them being used on a semi-regular basis when I drive by. Um, also partnering with us was the Michigan City Planning Department and the Michigan City Redevelopment Commission who provided the funds for the installation of those. And we had a wonderful article in the Laporte County Herald Argus, Argus. So if you want to learn more, I would say, look up that article. There were wonderful pictures there too. And finally, um, we're going to have another event, um, which is going to happen during our Earth Month Extravaganza, which is the last Saturday in April. So be sure to put that on your calendar to be there for lots of activities that will be happening. We'll have many vendors, um, of nonprofits there that day and more electric vehicles. So I want to thank everybody that contributed to the event.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other reports from boards or commissions? Okay, having none? Reports of special or select committees? Reports from the mayor or other city officers and departments? And, uh, Mr. Yagowski, wait a minute, uh, Chief, uh, okay, go ahead, Mr. Yagowski. Mr. Yagowski, go ahead. Yeah.
Hello, I'm Chris Yagowski from the, uh, General Manager of Michigan City Sanitation. Uh, we had a workshop that involved the new compost proposition to do an experimental program, which is a pilot program. At that time, I didn't have a demonstration, but I kind of want to give you a visual of what we really were talking about that evening. So, and this could be in any variety that given the, the president the color choices, but these can be in a variety of choices from yellows to blues to greens, but something that will be totally different than what we are currently have for our garbage. Right now, the ninety six gallon gallon container here at the very end is what we currently use for our garbage. This would be a forty eight inch and this is thirty two inch, uh, or thirty two, uh, excuse me. And so each one of those will be a cost of, the thirty two gallon would be forty dollars and fifty cents. Uh, the forty eight gallon would be fifty five dollars a cart and then the ninety six would be roughly sixty five dollars a cart. So just to kind of give you an idea of the sizes and the costs that are associated to that. I can answer any questions if you had any.
Yeah, Mr. Yagowski, and that's just for yard waste.
This would be just for, for yard waste. So this is compost that's picked up between April and November first and that's all of the, that it ends. And that's lawn clippings, garden, um, items, small branches, et cetera, like that. And then leaf pickup shop begins right after the November first.
Yeah, and then that's only if the resident chooses to go that route.
If, if.
To get that can.
That you choose, then the resident would have to choose this route to be, uh, to be involved in the compost pilot program. They would purchase their own can or cans. So for example, if somebody wanted to buy four of those cans, they surely could. As our refuge drivers would go by, they see the yellow cans, they pick just those up during your normal weekly pickup. So that would be just like your, your grass clippies.
Any questions, uh, Mr. Yagowski? Dr. Cora?
Mr. Yagowski, uh, the question I had was, the residents have the option of whether, uh, they want to use this or not. If, if they don't want to, they can continue to use what they have been using right now.
Correct. So a lot of folks do not, uh, do compost, which means that they have like bull chain mowers that they don't, there's, it just goes right back into the soil. They have compost, um, bins themselves at their property where they actually put their leaves and stuff and, uh, uh, trimmings inside of that and they use it for their gardens for future use. So a lot of folks do it that way instead of this process and then some people just do not. So this would give them a choice if they wanted to be a part of the compost that are wanting to be part of the weekly pickup, they can, to get a can and, and, and we would gladly pick it up weekly for it. This would be a sidearm loader that we would utilize to, to pick these up.
The other question Mr. Yagowski had was, what is your recommendation? What size, uh, should we go with?
Well, unfortunately, it's, it, it's all determined on amount of property you have. So if you have a larger or smaller amount of property, then I think the smaller to begin with would be the, the good start. Uh, like you say, for a, a forty dollar cost for this one, um, you, you may say you want, you want two because you have a larger lawn than most folks or you just have a smaller yard. But to start out too big would probably, it'd be smarter small, or start small, I believe. My opinion.
Okay.
Again, um, uh, Mr. Carter can, can address it too. He's the superintendent, so he can, can give you more information if you'd like.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Mullenhour?
Yes, Mr. Yagowski, may I ask the destination of the compost? Where is it going to once it's picked up?
It goes to our facility on Hitchcock Road where it currently goes now. So that's, that's, um, compiled there and kept and, and then decomposes on its own.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of Mr. Yagowski? Mr. Yagowski, thank you for your time and thank you for bringing the cans down here.
You're welcome.
Okay. And you can leave them here. Pick them up later.
Yes.
Yeah, you don't have to take them out of here now. Don't need all that banging and all that stuff. Okay. Chief Corley?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Marty Corley, Michigan City Police, Chief Police, uh, thank you, Council. Um, I come here to give you our October stats, uh, from Michigan City Police Department. Um, start off, our total calls of service were three thousand, five hundred ninety three, one hundred thirty two more than the month of September. Um, total reports taken were three hundred eighty one. That was six more taken than September. Total arrests were two hundred and twenty, which are twenty nine more than in September. Nineteen of those were juveniles and two hundred and one were adults. Um, total shots, fire calls are thirty eight, which is four less than September. Um, as Councilman Nelson had requested, I haven't broken down by, uh, districts also, so you all can see. Um, total firearm seeds were nine, it's fourteen less than in September. Uh, speeding tickets, one hundred forty five, fourteen more than in September. Nine were citations, one hundred thirty six were warnings. Warrants issued were one hundred eighty eight. Warrants served were one hundred and fifty five. Uh, warrants recalled were twenty in total. Amount of warrants cleared for the month of, for the month of October, one hundred and seventy five. Um, block reports, there were nine, uh, two were reference stolen vehicles that recovered. One was reference, uh, Raven notification where evidence was found. Uh, one was for sex offense investigation, two for hit and run accidents. One was for domestic battery investigation, one was for warrant arrests and one for resisting, uh, arrests and one was for accident report. Um, our social worker for the month of October had sixty total referrals, fifty five were contacts made. Um, those before referral sources were seven were from reports, eight were from patrol, one was from the Detective Bureau, twenty eight was self-referral and sixteen were outreach. Referral types, three were from suicide ideation or attempt. Sixteen were referenced mental health. Two were wellness checks. Fourteen was reference juvenile issues or runaway. One was reference abuse or neglect. Another sixteen were reference homelessness, unstable housing. Two were rest, reference aging elderly. One was protective order. Three was for victims of crimes. One's were death. Uh, two was financial issues. Three were legal issues. And resources provided. Three were community mental health, uh, centers. Um, three were emergency department hospital. Sixteen were resources provided were hospital or, or no shelters. And five were others, which included victims advocate, adult protect services, family advocates, Health Link and the MRT team. Any questions on the stats?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have, I have a question. Under warrants where it says warrants recalled?
Mm-hmm.
Wonder what does that mean?
Basically, either, either a warrant, uh, the courts had some termination where they made some, either as a mistake or it was, uh, a person showed up via attorney and attorney had to recall. Just basically means that the warrant is not no longer active and it's got recalled before the person was arrested.
Okay. Okay. Councilwoman Tillman?
This made me think of something. So do those warrants also include BAs, body attachments?
No.
Civil?
No, uh, no, we don't, uh, count civil in this warrant, in these warrants. And what, what, what our guys, what my people report to me is not the body, uh, body attachments are not reported in this.
Okay.
There's no, uh, question. I do have a couple of other announcements. Um, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Uh, sorry. So under the police social workers report, um, we've got outreach with sixteen. Is that like direct street outreach or more of like table in a bed?
Uh, direct street outreach. Um, our, our social workers sometimes go to the, um, shelters, works in shelters, also soup kitchens. And then we have, uh, what we call trust, which is a grant funded, full-time, uh, CIT type team that officers work off duties and they do a lot of outreach then, um, going out and checking on, um, some of the people that have been catalogued through encounters and just going back to see what their status is and any other services that could be provided or helped with.
Thank you.
There's no other questions. I just have a couple more.
I do have one, but the president isn't here to acknowledge me.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Mullenhour? Um, I want to acknowledge that the, um, youth arrests were down by seventeen from the previous month. So I think that's a, a good trend to be seeing.
Yes. We continue to work with the juvenile, uh, justice system and their different initiatives to, uh, lower encounters that result in arrests.
Okay, any other questions of the chief? Thank you, Chief Corley.
Do have a couple more now.
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, uh, so Friday, um, on the ninth, we will be doing a ribbon cutting for, I'm sorry, that's the eighth. We'll be doing a ribbon cutting for our decompression room. It's basically a part of our wellness program for our officers, um, to have a place to go to decompress if they're dealing with all their stress, anxiety or some type of issues there where they need to just get away for a second and not have to go too far, go somewhere where it's not comfortable, but somewhere they're safe, they can be decompressed. Either do it before work, after work or during their lunch period, or if the situation becomes too volatile, then they can actually be, uh, referred there by their supervisor for a little bit. So, um, thank you to, uh, Unity Foundation, um, Naturally Wood and Sacred Dooms Health for giving us, uh, funding and also some guidance on how to put that room together. Uh, November twelfth, we will be, uh, swearing in a new officer. We have a, a lateral transfer officer coming to our department, which will put us at eighty three officers, one short of our allotted eighty four. Um, December twelfth, we are partnering with, um, Health Link, I'm sorry, not Health Link, Franciscan Health to put on a QPR suicide prevention, um, session. Um, Nyla Williams, their outreach coordinator will be, um, we're working with us. We'll be using our community room to open it up to the public and we will also be putting, um, a, a good number of officers through that course also to continue with our efforts to better serve people that are having situations that sometimes don't, uh, call for an arrest. So, um, then November twenty first, we'll have the graduation for our, um, Citizens Police Academy, um, be around six, seven o'clock. So if you all are not doing anything, come by, have some to eat and meet our newest graduates from our Citizen Police Academy. We have approximately thirty two, um, participants that will graduate. So we'd love to have you all. By also the ribbon cutting is open to, to you all. I was, I will be sending you all a, a formal invitation via email tomorrow. So.
What, what time is, uh, the decompression?
Oh, I'm sorry, about nine thirty in the morning. It'll be in our roll call room.
All right.
What time is the, um, the Citizens Police Academy? Uh, so we start at six. Usually when we start at six, uh, they are fed a sponsored dinner, um, and then there might be a little bit classwork. So I would say graduation will be, uh, probably around sevenish, between seven or eight. What I will do is look at the agenda and also send you all a formal invite, uh, to that. That's November twenty first. It's a Thursday and that'll be in the community room. Also the swearing in on the twelfth, on the twelfth will be, November twelfth will be in the community room and the QPR suicide training on December twelfth will be also in our community room from one to three o'clock. Um, you will have to register for that one. Uh, if you go on Facebook on our site or either Franciscan, you'll see the face of friend, uh, register, but it's open to the public also.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Fairytale Fire Chief. Um, obviously I wasn't here for the October meeting, so kind of missed those September numbers. So catch us up tonight with our, our run call volume. I don't know, did, I don't, they got sent out late today. So I don't know if you, everybody got it? Should have did.
Okay, cool.
Um, so for the month of October, we had a total calls of three hundred ninety six. Now breaks down to five fire, three hundred and four, uh, medical calls, sixteen hazardous conditions, uh, three service calls, fifty four good intents, nine false alarms or false calls and five special incident type. Uh, again, for a total three hundred ninety six. On those three hundred and four medical calls, six, uh, Narcan was used six times. Um, but on that number, it's actually three hundred ninety seven. One of those just hasn't made it all the way through the system yet with the, uh, the report being finished. So it hasn't actually showed up. So it actually was three hundred ninety seven, but we're listed at three ninety six, which gives us a total of four thousand, two hundred and sixty eight incidents for the year, which is, um, two hundred and thirteen more than at the same time last year, uh, which was four thousand fifty five. So, or a five percent increase over last year. Um, other than that, we don't have much going on right now. So anybody got any questions, concerns?
Anybody have any questions of the chief?
No.
Thank you, chief.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other city officers or department heads that want to speak this evening? All right, moving on to, uh, petitions, Ms. Nyla?
There are no petitions this evening.
Communications?
A tort claim was received in a clerk's office on October twenty second from Burke, Cassandra and Careberry Attorney at Law. And President, um, Preszbalinski asked me to read the following correspondence that was received from Mr. York. Um, dear Council and Board of Works, enclosed herein, please find a petition my office received from Amtrak on August thirteenth, twenty twenty four, requesting exemption from the city's noise ordinance to demolish their Michigan City Kohling Tower next year. By virtue of section forty six dash sixty four of Michigan City Municipal Code, Amtrak is requesting that Michigan City Planning Department grant a temporary exemption from the city's noise ordinance to demolish the tower. I have determined that this should be set for a hearing on Amtrak's petition and under local ordinance, the hearing shall be open to the public and any person may testify. The hearing will be held on Monday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty four, at two thirty PM Central Standard Time in the Michigan City Common Council Chambers, one hundred East Michigan Boulevard, Michigan City, Indiana. The join via, to join Zoom, the information is as followed and you can pick this up in the clerk's office. As a matter of courtesy, I want to provide with you Amtrak's petition requesting an exemption notice of hearing published in the newspaper and a copy of relevant sections of our Michigan City Municipal Code regarding noise and exemptions. And it's very truly yours, Skylar York, um, planning and inspection.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nyla. And resolutions this evening?
A resolution by title only, a resolution increasing and decreasing appropriations within the budget of the promised scholarship fund, twenty three twelve for the year twenty twenty four in Michigan City, Indiana. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney and Ms. Tillman.
And do the authors have anything they'd like to add at this time?
Um, I would like to ask if, um, Ms. Kayla Warke had come up and speak in regards to this and also, um, Councilman Dabney and I are in support of this. And once everything is, is explained as to decreasing and increasing those funds, I believe, I hope that the council will also be in agreement. And then I will also be making a request for third reading on this tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening. Kayla Warke, Director of Education and Workforce Development. And Tracy, it's a resolution, I'm sorry.
Okay, I was gonna say, she explained it. She explained it really well. Okay. Okay. No, if you could explain the funding.
Talk.
I'm not sure which way to go now.
If, if you could just elaborate in regards to the fund.
Really, we're just seeking to transfer funds, uh, because Mayor and I had found some funds to cover, um, some outside funding, which was awesome to cover, uh, expenses and salaries for interns to stay a little bit longer. So really this is covering the cost of six interns. And so that funding, uh, through work one was really like a grant, grant funds. And so that's a reimbursement. So we're just looking for permission to trust for those funds when those funds come in. Until we get those funds, we're covering that, if that makes sense.
That's, thank you so much.
That's in the nutshell.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And anyone else in the public?
Pardon?
Yeah. Anyone else in the public who should speak on this resolution? Anyone else in the public who should speak on this resolution? Anyone else in this public who should speak on this resolution? Having none. Are there any further council comments? Any further council comments? And did you make a motion for third reading?
It's a resolution, so just a motion to support.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. And any further council comment on this? Having none, Ms. Nyla, on the vote?
Ms. Maldonar?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson? Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Preszbalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatrice?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
And Ms. Lee?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nyla. Thank you. And our first ordinance this evening, Ms. Nyla, by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, approving additional appropriation of the budget of the refuse fund for repairs needed for refuse equipment. And this is introduced by Mr. Preszbalinski and Mr. Dabney.
And Mr. Dabney's not here this evening, but I can testify that the, uh, Refuge Department, uh, needs the repairs done to this equipment. And I know that Mr., uh, Carter is here this evening. And if you would, sir, could you come down and possibly, uh, give the council some insight and the public some insight on what this, uh, three hundred thousand is going to be spent on? Oh, okay. And also, and also this evening, we're going to have a formal public hearing, which is going to be held, uh, tonight. And, uh, we will go ahead and this opens a formal public hearing. So go ahead and speak, Mr. Carter.
Thank you. Uh, Chris Carter, Michigan City Refuge Department Superintendent. Basically the repairs are, uh, to keep the trucks up and going. Uh, we've had to do some engine repairs, some, uh, mechanical repairs to the, like the PTO system. So basically without the repairs, the trucks won't run and that depletes our, uh, fleet that we can go out here and do our day-to-day, uh, services for. And that's going to affect, you know, getting out here, having enough trucks. So, yeah, the repairs are much needed. This, the trucks have, are because of the age of, of the fleet, it's taken a lot of wear and tear, a lot of beat over the years. So they just at that point now where they just, you know, any car, you get it over so many miles and use it for so many years, it just gets beat up and you constantly have to fix this and fix that. But seeing that we don't have any new trucks or any coming in schedule, we're just trying to keep these going.
So how many, how many vehicles do you have? How many refuse trucks does the city have?
Well, if I take a guess for our day-to-day operations, I say about ten that we use it. So that includes our sidearms as well, pickups.
All right, so we have ten trucks. How many spares?
Uh, out of that, it should be like four spares out of that ten. So we designate at least four, four trucks for our garbage and two sidearms and maybe two or three spare trucks.
Okay. So every day?
Yes.
So every day you need at least six?
At least, yes.
Okay.
And that's been a very, that's been a difficult challenge to maintain six trucks going.
Okay, so and with this three hundred thousand dollars, not only are we going to make repairs that are much needed. that are much needed, but we're also gonna have some money, sort of say, in the bank to pay for repairs in the future.
Almost definitely, the way we going, yeah.
Yeah.
Take care of future uh, things that's gonna come up, you know, so, yeah, definitely that.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions from the council, uh, Mr. Carter? Okay, thank you, sir.
Yep.
Anyone else in the public who should speak on this ordinance?
Paul Przewolinski, seventeen sixteen Washington Street. Um, have you received a comprehensive list of trucks, either in a running condition or in what state of repair? Because what I heard by Mr. Carter is that maybe we have X amount of trucks. When you're asking for money, you should know what you have. You should know what you need to be repaired. So, I'm getting a blank check? Or is it better to cut your losses and buy a new truck? And then go through and have somebody from the outside determine what truck is done, is past its life? You know, do a comprehensive study instead of just shelling out money. And I think that if they're in that condition, because those trucks are heavy, heavy duty, and if they're that bad, you need to say bye-bye and get something new to uh, give the fleet some life and not keep, you know, putting money. That, that's the same thing we ran into with the fire department. Kept spending good money after bad. And I think that, I think that you really need to look at it, that you got a crisis at the Refuge Department, and have a comprehensive list before you allocate money. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public who should speak?
Uh, yes, Tommy Kalovic, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. Um, my suggestion would be, you know, I know in the town of Westville, they have these, we have a house and water tower subdivision. They, they actually have a dump truck that fits in the bed of a pickup truck. How like, you can put a camper in the bed of the pickup, and they actually have a lift on them. And I think that would be ideal for they start using the composting. You know, they, they're, they're real nice and very easy to use. Uh, if they, plus they don't have to have a C D L to drive them. Well, one person can drive the truck and they can swap off load and then empty. And, and I know she wants to get these forty-dollar receptacles to help, help uh, off, help them unload the truck. But I think that we might get one of those uh, dump trucks that fits in the bed of a pickup truck, thank you. So have you that, that three hundred thousand dollar green garbage truck they use for the compost, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who should speak on this subject?
Hello, Scott Malonter in Kenwood Place. Mr. Paul Przewolinski, pardon me, brought up a good point. We should have an inventory of the vehicles and their condition. And in addition to these repairs, as I understand it, they're gonna scavenge, they're gonna make the best out of like five trucks that need to be repaired and get the fleet, uh, get a couple more working trucks out of it.
Mm-hmm.
But we, which we all support because we know how heavily used they've all been. Um, but there is a good point, uh, Mr. Carter brought up, there's no trucks on order to bring into the fleet to uh, do we have any plans to get more garbage trucks or get a uh, a schedule of replacing vehicles before they're in a crisis condition needing emergency repairs? I know that's not in this three hundred thousand dollars, but is it something that somebody's planning, that somebody's working towards? Um, but if we are gonna spend three hundred thousand dollars, we should, we should have an idea of what it's going for. One additional point, my understanding is with our C and G vehicles, which have much lower operating costs and have been well received, as I understand it, we're not able to work on them ourselves at central services. My understanding is not lack of skill, it, it's the facility doesn't meet the standards required to work on a C and G vehicle. I'm wondering if, uh, if that's correct, and if it is, if any of these monies might go towards uh, retrofitting the facility to allow us to work on our own vehicles, therefore not needing to send them out for repairs where everybody's backed up and needs parts and it's multiple weeks to, and then expense to the city. Uh, but I thought about the facility being able so we can work on our own vehicles. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else in the public who should speak on this uh, ordinance? Having none, any further council comments? Councilwoman Mullenauer?
Um, I'm trying to pull up where I heard this, and I'm not sure, but it seemed like Mayor Angie had mentioned at one point in time that she was working with Drive Clean Indiana to get three additional C and G vehicles. Um, can anybody verify that? I thought it was maybe happening in twenty twenty-five. Um, I don't think I'm making it up, but I wanna be sure that I'm, you know, speaking what so.
Hi, Mary Lynn Wall, City Controller. Yes, that's true, it, it's actually in part of the, in, in the budget that we budgeted the, the local match for those vehicles. So, but it's not gonna be happening until twenty twenty-five.
Thank you.
So Mary Lynn, if I could, if I could ask you, how many vehicles is that? How many? Three new garbage trucks, if they get a grant? Okay.
I'm not sure if they're all coming the first year or maybe.
Okay.
Got you, it's free and total.
Yeah, we don't know though, that's okay, but there are some coming. Okay. Uh, anyone else in the public who should speak on this ordinance? Having none, public comment is now closed. Uh, any further council comments at this time? Uh, I do have a comment, uh, Mr. Carter, if you would, please, uh, yeah, that, I, you know, I, I agree that we should take a uh, inventory of the trucks and at the next council meeting, or whenever you get it put together, okay? Even before the next council meeting, you know, what is wrong, you know, with each truck? And what the cost of each truck is gonna be right now to get them fixed?
Yeah, I have an inventory list in my office of all the uh, refuse trucks, some of them sanitation as well. Um, just to clarify, on the uh, Clean Indiana Grant, we're getting three trucks, uh, one of them is a rear loader, which will be a replacement garbage truck. One of them will be a uh, grappling truck, which we will use for our household pickups. And the other one will be another sidearm truck. But it'll be a smaller version of the ones that we have now, so we can go into tighter areas where those trucks would have an issue we're going into.
Okay, well, how, how about if we do this? Let's get a comprehensive plan, what the plan is for the next two years, three, three years. You know, what's to be retired, what's to be purchased, what needs uh, immediate attention? What the cost of these items are gonna be?
Yeah.
So, I don't know if you've been working on that, but that's what I want, and I'm sure the other council members wanna know what's going on with the uh, garbage trucks.
Yeah, we got invoices, uh, a little bit of everything. You know, between hydro lines and uh, packing blades coming off track, happen to be replaced, some of them cracked, uh, cracked frames, uh, tires being replaced continuously, and we got it all, you name it, and it's been done to it.
I know, but what, but whatever the issues are with each truck?
We can talk about it, I can get it, get it together.
Break it down, you know, cracked frame, tires, this blade system, whatever it is, put it on a sheet of paper and get it to the city council members as quickly as you uh, you can, you don't have to wait till the next council meeting.
Okay.
Cause then by then, you gotta give the council members time to digest this stuff and maybe come up with some uh, further questions.
Most definitely.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yep.
Councilwoman Tillman?
Mr. Carter, I, I do. Um, so based off of all these repairs, um, that is going to be needed from this amount, are these, will these repairs um, be crucial to the point, we need it sooner than later? To where, could they hold off until we get the new trucks? Because if we don't do it now, and we don't get the repairs to these vehi, to the trucks, then we're gonna be out of commission, and then we're gonna have residents complaining because they're trash and things are not getting picked up. So this is really more so of a need
Mm-hmm.
opposed to, and I understand, I, I'm not trying to spend some money that if we can save a penny, let's save a penny. But if this is something that we can't avoid right now, because even, let's say, we find out it's more beneficial to get a new truck, we won't have that new truck before the end of the year.
No, uh, you order a truck, it takes almost a year.
Exactly, so.
Same with the new trucks, though, uh, they are ordered, but they have to go through the manufacturer and build the frame, and they have to go somewhere else and build the body. But we can't even tell you, like, these three new trucks, we, they're, they're fitting to the twenty twenty-five budget uh, year because of the twenty twenty-six fiscal year starting in July. But we might not actually get physical, uh, the trucks physically until the end of twenty twenty-five, beginning of twenty twenty-six.
Okay, and, and I agree with Councilwoman Tillman that, you know, if there's a dire need, then we gotta get the trucks fixed because we have to pick uh, refuse up throughout the city.
Yeah.
We understand that. So, we gotta do that, but we also need this report of information, so we know where we stand with the department and get some planning put together for spending money in the future.
Most definitely, I appreciate that.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir.
No problem.
All right. Uh, Ms. Nyla, our next ordinance on second reading by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, amending the zoning map of the City of Michigan City, La Porte County, Indiana, to rezone real property located at twenty-three oh eight Franklin Street, vacant lot facing South Street, situated beside seventeen oh one Lafayette Street. Parcel number four-six-oh-one-three-three-one-six-four-oh-one-two-zero-zero-zero-zero-two-two slash Michigan City, Indiana, from the R-one zoning district classification to B-two zoning district classification. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Yeah, and Councilman Dabney's uh, not here this evening. And there was a formal public hearing that was held by the Planning Commission back on September twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-four. So with that being said, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? So go ahead, sir.
My name is George V S, I'm one-ten Woodside Drive, and I'm here for the rezoning of the twenty-three oh eight Franklin Street building, and also for the vacant lot beside, uh, facing South Street besides seventeen oh one Lafayette Street. If there's any questions, I'm here.
Okay. Uh, are there, are there any questions of the gentleman about the uh, piece of property? Okay, there are no questions by the council, so you can go ahead and be seated, and if there's anybody in front of the public that wishes to speak, they can speak uh, also at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Paul Przewolinski, seventeen sixteen Washington Street. This is a, a local business in the second ward, and at the last meeting, I uh, asked if uh, you would consider a third, second and third reading at that meeting. We've had a public hearing, a formal public hearing at the Plan Commission back in September. It is, it is now, no, uh, November. Uh, I believe, uh, I haven't heard anybody come and talk in the negative on this item. And I would hope that the council, somebody would move to have uh, third reading tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, this is Tommy Kalovic from thirteen sec, sixteen Ohio Street. I echo the sentiments of our senior council member, America Spal Przewolinski, to have this moved to third reading. Uh, anyway, Mr. Zadaius can go ahead and get going with his parking lot. I don't buy the asphalt plants are gonna be closing at the end of the month, so, you know, let's get this going so he can park his couple cars that he's gonna be working on there at Apex. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the public who should speak on this ordinance? Having none, uh, any further council comments? And Councilwoman Tillman?
Um, thank you, uh, Mr. President. I think that everything was explained in detail on the first reading. So based off of that information, I will be um, requesting if we can do third reading on tonight.
Second.
Second and third reading on tonight.
And second.
Okay, there's been a motion by Councilwoman Tillman to have third reading this evening and seconded by Councilman Cora. Uh, Ms. Nyla, on the vote?
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Przewolinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatty?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
And Ms. Moldenauer?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nyla. And if you would, please, uh, on third reading by title only?
An ordinance on third reading by title only, amending the zoning map of the City of Michigan City, La Porte County, Indiana, rezone real property located at twenty-three oh eight Franklin Street, vacant lot facing South Street, situated beside seventeen oh one Lafayette Street. Number four-six-oh-one-three-three-one-six-four-oh-one-two-zero-zero-zero-zero-two-two slash Michigan City, Indiana, from the R-one zoning district classification to B-two zoning district classification. And this is uh, introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Okay, and of course, Mr. Dabney's not here this evening, and we will go through the uh, public comment portion again, if anybody wants to speak on this ordinance? Anybody uh, which to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public who should speak on this ordinance? Public comment is closed. Are there any council comments, Councilwoman Tillman?
Motion to support?
Second.
Okay, motion to uh, approve by Councilwoman Tillman and seconded by Councilman Cora. Ms. Nyla, on the vote?
Mr. Przewolinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatty?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Ms. Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Moldenauer?
Aye.
And Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, yeah. And you don't have to come back for third reading. All right, thanks a lot. Have a good night. Okay, Ms. Nyla, our uh, next ordinance on second reading by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, amending various sections of Division One generally and municipal collection and disposal service and Article Four, Solid Waste in Chapter ninety-eight of the Michigan City Municipal Code, and creating Section fifty dash five oh nine and Section fifty dash five-ten in Article twenty-five, Utilities in Chapter fifty of the Michigan City Municipal Code Regarding Solid Waste Garbage. And this is introduced by Mr. Przewolinski, Dr. Cora, Mr. Coulter, Mr. Beatty, Ms. Lee, and Mr. Dabney.
And do council members have any uh, comments, the sponsors? I do, I have a uh, I have a sponsor. Yeah, I have a comment.
I do too, so go ahead.
Okay. That I have uh, well, myself and Dr. Cora put together a couple amendments on this, so I guess we're co-sponsors of the amendments. And the First Amendment would be is that, and this deals with yard waste. So that, number one, because at the workshop that we had with the Refuge Department, uh, they, and they were talking about yard waste and how the workers have workman comp claims from picking up the uh, garbage cans, and some of them have busted handles on them, so they gotta they have to bear hug these cans and flip them up in a truck. Well, number one, I wouldn't bear hug a garbage can and flip it up in a truck all day long, but so what it reads is that uh, a resident can either purchase one of these yard containers like we have here from the sanitary district, if some are available, or utilize their own con, container, thirty-two gallon yard waste garbage container. But it must have uh, operable handles, and the can must be structurally sound. Otherwise, if the handles are broke, the can is not being picked up. The can is gonna sit there until the resident decides they wanna go out and buy a new uh, uh, refuse can. So that's one. So that's one, uh, amendment, and doctor, if you wanna, if you, you want me to, I'll go ahead and read it off, or if you wanna do it, that's on the number of cans, yard waste cans?
All right, uh, you know, we, th- th- this is, this is on page six of eight. Um, on the yard waste, the container that's required, all yard waste must be placed in a thirty two gallon garbage container. A resident can either purchase a yard waste container from the sanitary district if the same are available. Or utilize their own container so long as, uh, their own container has operable handles as, uh, um, President Prisbalinski has mentioned, and it has to be structurally sound. The container must be less than fifty pounds and cannot contain dirt, salt, paper, plastic, or non-organic materials. And, uh, after the discussion we had here, uh, regarding the number of, uh, containers that should be allowed. Uh, we have modified that so the number of allowed yard waste containers, each resident is allowed no more than four. Thirty two gallon garbage container, uh, per, each week.
Okay, so those are, are amendments. Now I have a.
Mr. President, there was one other amendment, and that is on page five. Uh, and that is, one cart will be provided to each residence. Now, this is for the garbage, uh, at no cost. An additional cart may be provided for those exceeding their cart capacity. If the city has an additional cart to provide, no more than two carts shall be provided to each resident.
Okay. So I, I have a question for our attorney, because I know on amendments, you have to get, you have to get, uh, seconds. So with Dr. Cora and myself being two council members. Can one just automatically second, you know, the amendment and then it'll be, okay?
Yes, you can.
I didn't know if we had to get a.
Different, no.
Independent.
No.
Uh, non-amendment council person to say, yeah, I second.
No, that's fine. I think you also have one more section that was amended to that you could read. I don't have to read, but.
Okay. If you wanna go ahead, can, yeah, I'll, I'll read it, Gail. I don't, I don't have that watermark on my copy. Now, it's the one for the fee for the additional carts. That is page one, page one. Of amended version. And I will go ahead and read it, and it's section fifty dash five zero nine. B for additional carts or carts. If a determination is made by the refuse director that an apartment complex or business does not have space for a private dumpster. Uh, then each additional cart is a hundred and twenty dollars annually, okay? For an apartment business. It says, with the exception of the first year, which may be pro- prorated on a monthly basis. The annual fee will not be prorated. Any fees paid pursuant to this section are non-refundable once they're deposited. If an annual fee is not paid within thirty days of a new calendar year. The additional cart shall be forfeited and the city shall reclaim the additional cart. Uh, the apartment slash business must pay any and all unpaid fees under this section. Before being afforded additional or new carts. Before they can get their carts back, they gotta pay their monies that are owed. Understand, and everyone understand?
Yeah.
What the amendment is? Okay, all right. So those are the amendments, and are there any council comments? Uh, on those amendments? Councilwoman Molinar?
Yeah, not specifically on those amendments, but I did want to, um, I'm very sorry I missed the workshop. I was out of town on vacation that had been provide, that had been planned over a month. But, um, I did send, um, comments to, um, the workshop that I hope were read. But I very much would like the opportunity to put this into context as far as charges for services. And, um, I wanna remind the residents of Michigan City that when the greenhouse gas emissions inventory was done in, um, twenty nineteen. That they found that an inordinate, or in other words, a humongous amount of trash was going to the landfill. For a city of our size, it was just unbelievable how much trash was being taken to the landfill. And our intern at that time thought there had been a calculation error, but there had not been really, we're sending that much trash to the landfill. Um, I was in contact with the controller's office, and I think our residents should know how much we're paying annually to take trash to the landfill. In twenty twenty three, it was four hundred fifty five thousand, four hundred sixty two dollars and thirty seven cents. So far this year, it is five hundred forty four thousand dollars, nine hundred ninety six dollars and six cents. And we still have three months left to go. Um, this is really a huge amount of money that's being spent on taking trash away from our city. So I'm still advocating for us to find ways to get more things out of those trash bins into recycling. And we have the offer of the La Porte County Solid Waste District to come here, give workshops, educate our populace, so we can begin this shift. Um, what I am really concerned about is offering second trash bins to residents at no cost. And, um, Angie's interns did some really good research, and I really think our residents should hear what communities around us are charging. La Porte for a single-family dwelling is charging thirteen dollars and fifty cents per month. Um, Chesterton is charging, um, that's in figure two here. Nineteen dollars and fifty cents per month. I'm sorry, that's the city of Albarazo. Lake Station is charging a residential fee of eighteen dollars and fifty cents per month. Gary is charging twenty three dollars and forty five cents per month per home. The city of Portage is, for forty square feet or less, they're not charging anything. But that's the only community around us that's not charging anything, but if you're above that, you're getting charged. And then for South Bend, um, I couldn't understand the breakdowns, but they're charging anywhere from twelve dollars and forty eight cents per month to sixteen dollars and thirty five cents per month. So basically, um, outside of Portage, Michigan City is the only one that's not charging at all for trash pickup. And when we look at, when the budget was originally put together, it was like a six million dollar deficit. Angie worked man- magic and got it down to three million dollars. So I think as a councilperson, I have a responsibility to look at what we're paying for absolutely everything, and the residents need to know this. So I think it's a bargain that we're still proposing that you get your trash picked up for nothing, and I'm totally supportive of that. But for people that are requesting an additional or additional bins, I believe they should be charged for those at least ten dollars per month or one hundred and twenty dollars per year. Um, so that's my recommendation, um, in order for us to decrease the trash that's being sent to the landfill. And also hopefully begin to have an effect on our bottom line as far as these, um, you know, five hundred thousand dollars every year that we're spending for, um, trash disposal at the landfill.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, are there any other comments on the amendments that were presented? That's what we're talking about right now, the amendments that were presented.
So am I able to present an amendment this evening, or how does this work?
If, if a councilperson wants to present a amendment, it has to be presented in writing to the president of the council and to the other council members at the council meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, uh, moving along. Is there anyone from the public with, that wishes to speak on the amendments?
Bernie Hollahan, three oh two Gladys Street. I, I'm just wanna question one thing, uh. The apartments on, um, across from Queens, they have numerous containers over there that's city containers. And our garbage could picks them up. I know other apartment complexes, like the one over on Barker Road. They have their own containers. They have, they have dumpsters. Why does the city pay for the, for the, that apartments to pick up their garbage? I'm, I just don't understand that one when the other apartment complexes has to pay for a dumpster.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, this is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I'm gonna go ahead and buy one of the forty dollar receptacles for my compost and make it easier for the crew to lift it in the, in the, in the back of the truck so they don't have to lift it up. But I don't wanna, if I move away, if I go back to my mother's out in the country, I'm gonna take away because I'm gonna be owning that container. And I expect every Friday, the three days after refuse day, I expect to be picked up. And if they have the day off during the week for the holiday, they do their Friday pickups on Saturday. And we need to put a stop to all these that are dumping all their garbage and trash and refuse into their solid waste. Uh, light blue solid waste container. I got my behind the, uh, one behind.
Mr. Kalavich, speak, and we're speaking about the amendments right now. We're not speaking about total, uh, refuse pickup in the city.
Hello, Scott Malatour, I can replace. Concerning the amendments, I like the four cans for yard waste. I think that's a good thing. I spoke briefly with, uh, Mr. Yagowski on the way out. I think there might have been a, and one of these amendments says, uh, people can either buy a container, which I understand, or continue to use their own containers. That's new. Mr. Yagowski's like, they're gonna pass the ordinance tonight, the old system will be gone, and it will be these or nothing. That's what we were talking about two weeks ago, and now this amendment suggests we're not really getting rid of the problem of men having to lift cans. The whole point of going to the, the toters was that the machine could do it. Forget handles, forget all of it. They'd have a standardized container, people that wanna be on the compost program would pay for their container. And their machines can pick it up, not their, not their bodies. So I still think there might be a little confusion here, and I think I can see where you're coming from with the amendment, making it easier for the citizens of Michigan City to continue doing what they're doing. But that doesn't change anything, really, other than we limit the number of cans. Trying to keep it to the amendment. It was the number of cans. I like the number, uh, the confusion about the cans. And costs, I think we should put a cost to refuse. And do businesses have to pay for their second and third toter? The, the ordinance says that we'll pick up businesses up to three, three toters. Do they have to pay the additional fee for their extra toters, or do businesses get up to three for free? Um, a great way for people to use less of something is to put a cost to it. Um, if other community, and we do have severe budget problems here, as we know, we have a structural imbalance by actually twenty million dollars. You know, if that's what we have to do, let's just, you know, we're going through all this to try to save a couple hundred grand. If you put a monthly cost of things, people will throw, will use, like, they'll produce less garbage. People will be more efficient. Um, I, I think you guys have to make hard decisions that you might tick off some of the people. But we've got big budget problems and, uh, money needs to be raised. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the public which to speak?
Paul Prisbalinski, seventeen sixteen Washington Street. Um, as, um, being a longtime sitting member of the council. I wanna remind the council that our garbage problem came up from people stripping out homes and taking advantage in being, uh, uh, how can I say it, um, entrepreneurs in our woo double-track Michigan City and trying to make a quick profit on buildings. And there was things going on all over Michigan City in people stripping out buildings and putting it in the yards. And not giving a damn about the neighborhoods. All right, let's talk reality here. I don't think you're at the point yet to pass anything. I don't agree with the fact that I can only have two containers, but you're gonna give a business three containers. I thought the whole thing that was discussed at the workshop was to get away from what we've been doing. And that was to get away from collecting from businesses, to get away from collecting from apartment, apartment businesses, whether it's a complex or a two-flat. They have small enough containers that somebody could, if they got an apartment complex or a two-flat, or a three-fat flat, or a four-flat, that some are, that they can get a container. And they better have enough property to house it on their property. So wh- what I'm saying, what I'm looking at is I have a problem with, uh, the right of entry. That it says any necessary notices will be provided. Well, you don't have in here how they're gonna send the notices. What are they gonna do? Just drop them in the door? And then tell somebody, oh, I gave you a notice, cause that has happened. They should be sent out by certified mail. And sent not to, you know, to the owner of that property. I don't care if they're in California. Cause you know what? I got a house in my neighborhood that was brought up at a Board of Works meeting back in August about the yard not being cut. It's still not cut. So if we're gonna do something, let's do it right the first time. Also, in the, um, uh, ordinance, I, I didn't see in here where I could buy another cart. Uh, I didn't see it anywhere. But I was at that workshop. And I'm looking at this language that I, I think that the whole purpose of what we were talking about at the workshop with the containers, uh, just hold on a minute, this is a good point. I went to the workshop and I put my time in, is that we were gonna get the containers so they wouldn't have back injuries. You're not accomplishing anything if you're gonna let people still use containers. And how much, we need to look at how much has been paid out in claims over there before you make a, a come to judgment. And, and also you haven't done anything or even passed a resolution, uh, uh, an accompanying resolution to do something with the Hitchcock dump. Then, and that is that we got.
Please summarize.
Please, give me a little bit of time here. Uh, the point is this, is I don't think I should be charged for a cart. And I, the, the total cost for the cart, or one of them carts for five thousand people is two hundred and two hundred.
Please have a seat.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
That's it, yeah, Mr. Carter.
He's got a point order.
I did.
Okay. For Mr. Carter to come and talk? Is that what you were asking? Okay.
Um, so let me address two things that came up. Uh, first off, once the ordinance is passed, the apartment complexes who have our containers must surrender them. And they will have to go out and buy dumpsters. So we will get some of those cans back. And they will reallocate dumpsters in some other areas. So the, uh, businesses, the only reason that they're coming up saying that they can, can keep some containers is, at my judgment, if I see a property where they can't get a, a dumpster because they don't have the space, then we'll provide them the containers, and I think anything after three, we charge a hundred and twenty. Um, the compost thing, I think this, we should look at this more as a test pilot. We haven't committed to that. Uh, as of right now, I think that we're still at the standard four cans, and that's it, because with the first one, we would have to buy another, uh, sidearm truck to pick that one up. The last two, we may can use either a sidearm or a rear loader truck. So, I mean, I, I don't, I don't think the orders are saying you have to buy it. We're prepared to go both ways with it. The hope is to transition into this, so, you know, we're not, we're not saying. The hope is to transition into this, so, you know, we're not, we're not saying that once this ordinance passed, you're, you're committed, you have to buy this can, though. We're not saying that. So I just wanted to clear that up for you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carter, and, yeah, that's the same thing. At the workshop, maybe it wasn't clear, but I did call Mr. Yagowski up and talk to him about the yellow can, thirty-two gallon can with good handles and all that. And this yard waste program, take it to the bank. This yard waste program is gonna be a pilot program. Nothing's gonna be written in stone that you're gonna have to buy this yellow can or any different size can. It's just a pilot program. And Dr. Cora understands, and, you know, with the back issues and workman's comp, and that's why we put that in there for the handles, to look at that issue also. Then, if something has to be changed to reduce workman's comp and people getting injured, well, then Mr. Carter has to come to the, uh, city council and make us aware of what's taking place with the workers, and we will work with him in a proactive manner to take corrective measures to try to eliminate it the very best that the city council can. Okay, but by no means is this written in stone, this program. Yes, sir, Dr. Cora.
Mr. President, uh, the question was brought up whether everybody is mandated to buy those, uh, new, uh, containers. And Mayor Angie felt that, uh, we should not mandate it at this time. We'll do it as a pilot. So that's the reason why we left it as a pi- as a pilot program.
Yeah, and, and then one of the big reasons is we don't have a truck equipped to handle this type of container. So number one, you gotta buy a truck, okay, to take care of the container, and we're not even anywhere close to that. Now, as we come up with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to buy a one-arm banded garbage truck. Uh, any other, okay, public comment is closed on the amendments? So, uh, the, the amendments are in front of us. Is there any further council comment? Councilwoman Tracy Tillman?
Thank you, Ms. Priswalinski. Uh, my only, uh, comment or recommendation would be is if they, if they read the language that says pilot, if that, if we're gonna do another amendment, maybe it would be best to indicate that language in this, indicating that it's a pilot program. Sometimes when you see it, then they understand that that it's a pilot program. And then the question is, if this is a pilot program, are, at what point are we gonna do this for a year? To see how it works, and then bring it, come back?
Yeah, I, I think it would have clarified things if the language pilot program was included in the actual ordinance. Legally, it doesn't have any significance one way or the other. That's just a drafting preference. But as long as you all are, are on the same page in terms of you want to revisit this, you can do that with an amendment at any point. So if there's a recommendation that you look at this again in a year, that will be your pilot period. It doesn't have to be formal and included here with a definite end date of the program. Whenever you feel comfortable doing it, I, I imagine you'll get a recommendation from the administration, and then you can set another workshop, talk about how the pilot program has gone, and then in, in, an amendment can be introduced. Right now, you just have total flexibility on when the pilot program will be over.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. All right, and? Councilwoman Molyneux?
Right, um, I, this is just my personal recommendation, but I think the yellow one should be not included in this choice since we don't have trucks or equipment to be able to lift and dump that. Whereas the two green ones, we're able to deal with that right now. They're the exact same size as our trash canisters that we have. So that would make logical sense to me. Um, I am totally supportive of the bins being taken away from the apartment complexes and other businesses that may have those. And, um, thank you, Mr. Carter, for the recommendation that, um, your department will go out to those places that it doesn't seem viable that they can actually rent a dumpster to take care of their refuge. Um, I think that's totally reasonable. Um, again, I'm just gonna say I'm sorry I missed how to amend things, but I think in the future I would really like to see us consider again, um, charging for that additional dumpster. I, tra- additional bin, I just don't want to see people getting those, and we see our trash collection expanding when we're trying to make it lower so that we're not taking so many items to the, um, to the, to the landfill.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments on the, uh, amendments? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Was that?
Support.
Was that Mr. Nelson? Okay, there's a motion to support by Councilman Nelson and seconded by Councilman Beatty. Ms. Nyelov on the vote?
A po- point of order, uh, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Are we voting separately on each amendment, or can we just lump all three into one vote?
My intentions were to lump all three into one vote, since they were presented in that manner. Okay, Ms. Nyelov on the vote?
Ms. Tillman?
Hmm, nay.
Mr. Beatty?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Molyneux?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
And Mr. Priswalinski?
Aye.
We have seven in favor and one opposed.
Okay, and this amendment will be held over for third reading at our next, uh, council member, uh, council meeting. And that brings us to our first ordinance on third reading by title only, Ms. Nyelov?
An ordinance on third reading by title only, creating section fifty dash five-two-two and article twenty-six vegetation of chapter fifty fees and fines, and creating section one oh two five-four, article two, trees, shrubs, and other plants of chapter one oh two vegetation of the Michigan City Municipal Code to establish a tree removal permit and fee. And this is introduced by Dr. Cora, Mr. Coulter, Ms. Lee, and Mr. Mo- Ms. Molyneux.
And do the authors have anything they'd like to present at this time? Dr. Cora?
Yes, President, I just wanted to clarify that this fee is not for individuals who are, uh, taking care of the tree themselves. This is only when they utilize, uh, uh, a contractor.
Okay. Any of the other authors have anything they'd like to add? No? Okay, uh, public comment? Public comment?
Paul Priswalinski, 1716 Washington Street. I look at this as passing more regulations without enforcement. And the reason I say that is I want to ask you, quite literally, has anybody checked in to see how many tree planting permits have been issued by the Board of Works? Has anybody read the chapter on trees? And has the tree, uh, the forester done an inventory on trees that need to be trimmed that are impeding street, uh, lights? Because there's many of them that are impeding the streetlights. And it's written in the ordinance that no trees are to impede the directional, I guess, beams from the streetlights. So since I read that ordinance, I've been going around town, and there's many. And there's many lamps that need to be moved if you don't want to trim the trees out. But my, my point is this. Enforce what's on the books before you pass more regulations, and no one said how many cases that this involved. And that's one point that I was cut off at the last meeting from bringing up. How many cases did this involve? And if you can't regulate what you already got out there, how are you gonna regulate this? So I, I'm just saying, I, I think we're overregulating. I really do. And if, if somebody cuts down a tree in their yard and they damage a neighbor's yard, or they na- damage anything, that's a civil matter, not the sinews matter. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the public wish to speak on this ordinance?
Hello, Scott Malonter, Kentland Place. I was, uh, initially felt somewhat similar to Mr. Priswalinski, that this was just additional regulation. But after the last meeting, we had quite the impassioned, uh, plea from city forester, Mr. Wolf. And, uh, he convinced me that this was a good thing to have. So as much as I am against extra regulation and extra bureaucracy and extra fees, I think Mr. Wolf made a good case of why this should be, um, passed. So he won my support. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone else in the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Any, uh, council comments? Any council comments? Motion to approve? Yeah. Okay, motion to approve by Mr. Nelson?
Seconded.
And seconded by Dr. Cora. Any further council comment? Having none, Ms. Nyelov on the vote?
Mr. Beatty?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Molyneux?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Priswalinski?
Aye.
And Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nyelov, and our final ordinance this evening on third reading by title only?
An ordinance on third reading by title only, amending the fees and fines with various chapters and sections of the Michigan City Municipal Code, and this is introduced by Mr. Dabney and Mr. Beatty.
And those, the author have anything you'd like to add at this time?
This, like, uh, many of our other ordinances, has, has been through second reading, has had amendments, uh, approved. And, uh, we've discussed it every aspect of it, I believe, but, uh, Michigan City has been providing free services for many actions for as many as fifty years, uh, back to the nineteen seventies. Uh, almost all other cities, uh, like us, charge fees for many of these amenities. We aren't in a position, in fact, we really never have been in a position to give away free services, uh, and definitely not now. Uh, we're gonna have to work together to help the city function within the budget. Uh, I know there are some who aren't going to be comfortable with some of the fees that were included in here. Uh, but we're all gonna, and we're in a unique situation here, and we're all gonna have to come together. And, and really, all this is doing is putting us on an even keel with, uh, our sis- our sister cities. So I'm very much in favor of it.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else from the, uh, anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance?
Scott Malonter, Kentland Place, sorry to keep coming up here, but this wasn't in the agenda that's here on the table, but in what's posted online, this ordinance has twenty-three different exhibits. Everything from exhibit A to exhibit N, exhibit N one. There's a lot of details here, a lot of exhibits in particular that I just question, I've attended the workshops. I've been to most of these meetings. Uh, the Baker Tilly presentation, I reviewed the fee ordinances that they proposed, or fee schedules. To my layperson's eyes, they seem reasonable. We cleaned up a lot of things. Um, but here in a public forum, the general public has no way of knowing what these are, given there are twenty-three exhibits that are not published. And I do find that concerning. I, I don't know if I'm barking at the wrong tree, but it just feels wrong that we're passing a fee ordinance, something that actually has money involved with it, and there's over, again, twenty-three exhibits detailing what those fees are that aren't published. Um, I find that concerning, and I just thought I'd bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Paul Priswalinski, 1716 Washington Street. I believe that I'll agree with your concerns on that matter, sir. But I would like to ask the city clerk, when there is an exhibit tapped onto a ordinance, does that get codified into the ordinance? Or is it when it goes down, down for codification, or they can't codify exhibits?
They don't codify.
They don't codify exhibits, so nobody's gonna know. That's information, every time that these people give you an exhibit, there's a purpose behind it. It should be in the ordinance. It should be in the ordinance when you pass it. And you are correct, sir.
Any other public comment?
Uh, yeah, Tommy Kalavich, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I'm still not keen with this fifty-dollar tree to cut down a tree on your property. You know, say, I wanna go have a commissioner's deed sale, and I buy a couple parcels of land. Now, a lot of these, these parcels, land they're selling, you know, they're back, been back on their tags, they look like something you see out of a Spike Lee movie. But I'm gonna go out there, I'm gonna take that fifty dollars and I'll buy a new chain, new gas and oil for my, for my chainsaw to start clearing that man land and making it look nice. Maybe put a couple of those tiny houses on there for my young people. It would be Ray Ray's house and Tay Tay's house. It's, well, say, uh, th- that's, uh, what I gotta say about that.
Anyone else in the public wish to speak on this? Anyone else in the public wish to speak on this? Having none, are there any further council comments on this ordinance?
Motion to approve, seconded.
Okay, I do, I do have a, uh, a question, uh, with all these, you know, because I have everything provided to me, uh, I guess the general public would go online to look at this ordinance and these different exhibits and all the changes that have been made. So is that by law where this should, has to be posted online for the public to look at? All the changes that are in here, all the tracked changes?
After it's adopted.
Pardon?
After the ordinance is adopted, it'll go online.
Okay. So after the ordinance is adopted, that's when it goes online? Okay, I just want to get that clarified. Okay, uh, any further council comment? Motion to approve?
Oh, do you, and said?
It's yellow motion.
Oh. Okay, who made the motion? I'm sorry.
Beatty.
Okay, okay, Councilman, uh, Beatty made the motion to approve, and who seconded it?
Us.
Nelson.
And Councilman Joe Nelson seconded it. Ms. Nyelov on the vote?
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Molyneux?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Priswalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
And Mr. Beatty?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you, Ms. Nyelov. Uh, that concludes all the ordinances for this evening. And now we go on to, uh, new business, and FYI for the council, we still have two appointments to the Redevelopment Commission. Oh, we do have two appointments to the Redevelopment Commission. Incumbents are Tracy Tillman and Cherie Wilson with the current term ending on twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. And FYI, the council has three appointments to the Urban Enterprise Association, terms ending twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. The incumbents are Nick Pollak, Dakota Uler, and Rodney McCormick. And under unfinished business, the council has two appointments to the revolving loan fund incumbents. are Pia Parrott and Erica Miller. And there's a note that one member was a, has to, should be, has to be a senior level professional loan officer, and one member is from business or retail, who's a resident of Michigan City. And with that, we are now at comments from the public. And hold your comments to three minutes, please. Pardon? No, we're not, not, no. Yeah, that's, that was just, uh, new business. Yeah.
Ernie Hallahan, Thriller, Gladys Street. Backing up on the ordinance about the garbage trucks, uh, it's a shame we've let them go this long and they have to pass that much money to repair them now. And haven't bought any new ones. I know you bought a new fire truck last year. But I know the garbage truck that comes down my alley sounds pitiful. It's rattling and claddling along. But this should have brought to your attention quite some time ago before they got to this condition. I I know this is under a previous person running it, but it should have been brought up before now instead of trying to repair what's almost unrepairable. So you're going to be spending a lot of money on garbage trucks. Thank you.
Uh, yes, this is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. First of all, I was out doing my yard work uh, last week, and my buddy Dave Beal pulled up. He said, when I, he, he listens, watches all the meetings, eighty-one years old, been really active over all these years. He said, I need to talk slower, so, you know, he has trouble understanding. That's why I'm talking slower from now on. I want to say, uh, the thing with Amtrak, they've been the worst god-awful community partner we've had. I know they want to tear down the old dilapidated tower over on Highway twelve. That's what this is all about. When they come here, they need to do their work between the hours of seven AM and eight PM like the rest of us. They're not going to do it all twenty-four seven. They, they, they still need to take down all the signers and the shanty back here. They closed your station stop back in, that was April two thousand twenty-two. They need, that's in violation of an order. Nineteen point zero five prohibited signs. Signs that, obsolete signs, sign that advertise a product that is no longer made, an event that has already occurred, or a business that has closed, and you actually see that all over the city, are prohibited. The enforcement shall provide a letter to the property owner, given the set time of removal of the obsolete signs. So when they do their tower, they need to go down and take their little shanty and their signage down bagger. It's really creepy when you go back there, in my opinion. Uh, it's, uh, I want to talk about what I said about the solid waste containers. Well, the people are putting all their trash and putting it out in the alley for the reference, they're under orders not to empty the solid waste. I remember those solid waste containers, they came out in two thousand nine. That's when Mayor Chuck Overly was the mayor. That was back during Mayor Angie's original tenure on the council with Councilman Paul Prisbalinsky. We switched over from the little red containers, the solid blue, but they, they, well, I got two of them. My mom actually took the garbage bags out and put them in my refuse can for them to pick up. But they went back and they stuffed those again, where you can't even close the lid, and the, the garbage gets all over the alley. Uh, they, you need to put some kind of finer punishment on people there. Uh, it made no sense to me that they gave every household those solid waste receptacles back then. And, and, you know, with the people, even if you don't use them. I, I thought that was ridiculous. They, if, they, they needed to either take them away or something like that. Uh, I just want to say, Brian's going to be playing his first Monday night football game this Monday. I got a home game against the Dolphins, so everybody watch that and check that. I thought Marquette was supposed, girls were supposed to play their first game tonight. I walked over, it didn't look like they might have canceled that game. So I just want to say good night.
Thank you, Tommy.
Cherie Wilson, ten thirty Liberty Trail. Um, just wanted to take and give you guys some advice when dealing with Amtrak from my past life of overseeing projects in conjunction with railroad by regulation. You have to have a railroad flagman on staff at that time, and they'll provide it. And what happens is, and I just want you guys to understand this, and this is probably why they're asking from some leniency, is that as soon as a train is coming through, they call the flagman. The flagman then has all your construction workers go off to the safe distance away from the track. I think it's like sixty feet, but I might be wrong. It's been a while since I've done those, this. And so you lose so much time. So if you're only doing an eight-hour workday, you might get two, three hours worth of work by, depending upon the amount of trains you've got going through. Because it's about a half hour turnaround time by the time you pull the guys back, you put it back on. It's very inefficient. So by giving them a little bit of grace, but keep them within a reasonable amount, seven AM to nine PM maybe, but allow them that latitude because it, it's actually safer in the long run for the public. The sooner you can get something like that down, and the sooner you can clear it away from the track, it's just the most safer environment for everyone. Just, that's all.
Good evening, Council. Nick Pavone, President of Michigan City Local four seven five. I'm on, I'm here on behalf of the Michigan City Firefighters Local four seven five, following a recent vote from our membership, a vote related to negotiations with the city and the city's counterproposal, which our members did not vote in favor of. As we move forward, I think it's vital that we reconsider prioritizing a lateral transfer program in our next contract. So some context, next year in twenty twenty-five, we will have to start creating a new hiring list. That list will be valid for two years, and those two years is twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven. So this program, uh, it's essential as it allows us to attract skilled and certified candidates from other departments. Without getting this language in this current contract, we wouldn't be able to attract those applicants until twenty twenty-eight. So that's three years of missed opportunities to bring in experienced firefighters to reduce training costs and to improve the quality of service that we provide to our community. Um, and I do want to also give more context. When we hire unskilled people that don't have certifications, that typically is about six months of training for them within their fire academy and their EMT. While they're gone on that six-month period, we typically have to pay overtime, so we see it as a potential cost savings to the city. Our recent hiring lists have been small, and they lack competition. As it stands, we are sometimes hiring from the very bottom, simply because we have limited options. Not necessarily choosing the individuals that are most qualified. Let me put it this way. If you have to go to the emergency room and you need a doctor, do you want a doctor that is just, um, just meeting the minimum standards, or do you want somebody that excels? So that's exactly what we're facing. We're forced to hire from the bottom when we should be recruiting top talent. I ask you to reevaluate the proposal and give serious consideration into adding the lateral transfer program. We want to make firefighting in Michigan City competitive, not just for our department's strength, but for the safety and well-being of our community. This program will help us get there, and it will save the city on training costs along the way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, Scott Mallon, turn kind of place. Quickly, I appreciate you looking into the exhibits that I brought up before. I know we passed the, we passed that ordinance tonight, I believe, or passed it to this next reading. It still feels wrong that the fee schedule isn't public yet. Um, you just his point. Regarding Amtrak, they're asking for the noise exemption. Um, I too second that we give them the grace to do their work. They want to do it as quickly as possible. Um, I think it's sad that we're losing another local landmark in that Coling Tower, but if that's what's going to be, let's let them do it as quickly as possible. Um, third, I've got a, a new thing to bring up. Um, bringing up city services, our police calls. It's been brought to my attention that uh, the, the outlet mall, we have a fair number of police calls there for shoplifting or whatnot. And it's pretty much, as I understand it, a policy of almost all the stores not to prosecute. So the police end up wasting time. And then people are essentially released. I think similar to, I might not be explaining it well, but we get a lot of runs there that don't result in it going anywhere because nobody presses charges. Um, similar to how other cities have ordinances about false alarms of a security alarm going off, you get, you get billed for it after one or two. I think we should look into if a, if a store isn't going to cooperate in the justice system, that after two calls or something, the third call, they get billed. Uh, we're not there to you police their stores if they're not going to prosecute offenders. It's a waste of resources, and it's a stressed situation, dangerous for the police. I just thought I'd throw that one out there. It's another way that maybe we can raise some money. Because it's not fair that they use services and then don't follow through with it. And I know that's frustrating for the police. Thank you.
Anyone else want a public which to speak?
Paul Prisbalinsky, seventeen sixteen Washington Street. Um, with regards to the fee structure that you passed to this evening, did anybody produce a projected uh, income list on how much that was gonna, of new income that that was going to generate, that was gonna build, bridge this gap of over three million dollars on, on these fees being established? Did anybody have a, a list of how much that new fees were going to structure off of the fees that are already collected? I think that's an interesting statement to find out. Um, and that's not my job to find out, okay? So also, I believe that this grant for three C and G trucks, that's almost ridiculous, because you can't work on them here, so when they get, something messes up on them in a, a couple of years or at any time, you got to send them out. So why aren't we thinking, and I'm all for environmentally, you know, friendly things, is why aren't we looking at clean diesel? Okay, there's such a thing as clean diesel. There, there really is. This has been absolutely has been refined and, and it works. Now, I believe that the city or the council should have allowed the amendments to be voted on separately so that the general public had three minutes to talk on each amendment. But I only received three minutes to talk on all your amendments. I think that was, uh, shallow for the, uh, general public to have their input into what was going on here this evening. Also, you're looking for millions of dollars to prop up the fund because of some, uh, department overestimated the income coming in. Are we still funding the four hundred and twenty acre annexation sewer and water project? Has that been, uh, cut? Has that capital project been cut? That's what I'd like to know. And also the, uh, situation on garbage? If we have a sustainability committee, how come they aren't, uh, been assigned by the administration or the council to say, hey, come up with some alternative suggestions? But what I will say is that the garbage generated is going to be reduced because of not collecting on apartment complexes and all these other things. But the real matter is that why aren't we getting a grant to do this, to get the trucks, to get the containers, so that these guys, because that's the hardest job you got in the city, is lifting these containers, what they're doing right now. I've always made sure that I got proper containers, all right?
Please.
But we're not going to reduce, the whole point of that workshop, it was brought out that that will reduce the problems at the sanitary district and make them more efficient. So what did you solve by not casting it completely? All right? Gee.
Anyone else want a public which to speak on anything? Anyone else want a public which to speak? Having none, any council comments? Councilman Coulter?
Yeah, so, uh, thank you, Mr. President. So, um, we were working on the door several months ago and tabled it recently. Um, I've worked with several constituents and just kind of talked to them about what their thoughts on it might be. Um, and everyone's pretty in favor of, of getting that back on the table and passing that. So I'll talk to the clerk, that's the next step, right, okay, about putting that on the table for the November nineteenth meeting. Thank you.
Councilwoman Mullenour?
Yes, this is an announcement, Northwest Indiana Green Drinks is happening this Thursday, which is tomorrow, November seventh at six thirty PM. Um, the topic is join the resilience Northwest Indiana region, resilience. Um, founder Kathy Sipple and members of her team will share ways this emerging nonprofit organization is providing opportunities for learning and grassroots connection to other sustainability-minded people across Northwest Indiana. And I'm proud to say that our, um, Michigan City Sustainability Commission actually has spawned a number of either commissions or mayor advisory committees. Um, out of the work that we've done, we've inspired a lot of our neighbors to do a similar, um, a similar, um, project for their communities. So you can join, um, join the conversation uh, either on Save the Dunes Facebook Live, or you can get a Zoom link from Em, that's short for Emily, E M, at savetunes.org, and she'll send you the link so you can join us via Zoom if you're not a Facebook user. So I invite everybody to be there. It's going to be very interesting. She'll spend a very short period of time talking about history and, um, projects that have succeeded. But most of the time will be spent on the future and what we can do as a region um, to make our whole municipalities, communities, and our living quarters resilience based.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Any other comments from the council members? I have a, uh, couple of comments, couple of responses. Uh, unfortunately, Tommy Kalavich left early, but I was going to thank Tommy for, uh, notifying the city forester of, and I don't know if everybody else got that email that Tommy sent, and you know, the forester replied back, and there was a, it was on South Ohio Street, there was a tree that was either rotted and it fell over, or the wind blew it over, whatever. It was laying on power lines. And Tommy called, uh, the city forester and got the action going to get that tree removed out of there. It was a, it's a safety issue, you know, whether it's laying on a NESCO line, or a telephone line or whatever. I mean, if that tree falls and it falls on a car or somebody going by, uh, it's not going to be good. So I just want to thank, uh, because Tommy was then re-instructed in the email that there's a procedure that he should follow instead of just whoever he contacted initially. So I just want to thank Tommy, whichever way you want to do it, if you want to call me to get a tree removed, I'll help you do it. Uh, yeah, I don't think somebody should have to be, uh, corrected in an email on the proper procedure on how to do things. Uh, and the other thing, uh, that was brought up about biodiesel, clean diesel. All right, and myself and Councilwoman Mullenour have talked about it. Uh, as far as the city of Carmel, you know, I went to the sustainability committee meeting, and you guys handed out the book. And it had that the city of Carmel, uh, was using or was investigating that technology. And they are working with a company out of Hammond that has, provides that, uh, type of diesel fuel. So then I got ahold of Ms. Neary.
Yeah, Abigail Neary.
Abigail, yeah, from the sustainability committee, and I gave her all the contact information for the city of Carmel, who to contact on her, and what's going on. And then I gave her the name and a number of the gentlemen from, uh, the diesel company in Hammond, Indiana. And I, we, we talked a couple of months ago, so she said that she's investigating that right now. So that issue is being looked into, uh, right now. And, uh, let's see, Border Works, uh, I think that's it. And let's see, Board of Works, I think that's it for this evening, so are there any other council comments? Having none, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, meeting's over. Thank you.